Welcome everyone to the October 8th Planning Board Meeting. First, David Austin is excused this evening. First item on the agenda is to approve last month's meeting minutes. We paid some bills as always. We acted on the Sixth Daniel Lord Road and Three Borough Hall LLC lot line extension, the Dune Wetlands application, SH-29 Westneck LLC lot line adjustment, and Westneck Creek cottages SECRE resolution update. We had two public hearings, one for the Tesoro's Wetlands application at One Seagull Road, and one for the Three Borough Hall Lane LLC and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC lot line adjustments. I think it was a pretty straightforward meeting that anyone, everyone looked through the note, meeting notes.
Good.
Any good? So I make a motion to accept the September 10th meeting minutes.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
We have four bills to pay. The first is from the Rayner Group for services rendered in August in the amount of $453.75. It was for work on the Three and Five Borough Hall Lane Lot Line Modification, the DeFouer Share Lot Line Modification, and attending a planning board meeting. Very well, very helpful for us, so I make a motion to accept the Rayner Group's August invoice for $453.75. Second?
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
We have invoice from the Rayner Group for services rendered in September in the amount of $825. This was work on the Elliott Bowsmann Lot Line Modification, the Westneck Creek Minor Subdivision, the Sixth Daniel Lord Road Three Borough Hall Lane Lot Line Adjustment, Westneck Creek Cottages again for the EAF Parts Two and Three, for the minor subdivision, and attending a meeting. Again, very helpful for us, we can't do without, so I make a motion to accept the Rayner Group's September invoice in the amount of $825.
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
We have an invoice from EHA for services rendered in August in the amount of $1,059.37. Preparing the public hearing notes for Tesoro, extension resolution for SH-29 Westneck LLC, intending the planning board meeting, correspondence with the Three Borough Hall Attorney, and finalizing the public notice for Three Borough Hall. Again, very helpful, what we need, so I make a motion to accept the EHA August invoice in the amount of $1,059.37.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Last one is for invoice from Perrylo Hill for services rendered in July and August, the amount of $675. This has to deal with the current litigation in the Heights. I can't speak to the particulars of this, but it's something we have to do. I make a motion for, to accept the Perrylo Hill July and August services invoice in the amount of $675. Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
We have four resolutions this evening to review. The first is the Three Borough Hall LLC Lane, Three Borough Hall Lane LLC and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. Approving the lot line adjustment. It is fairly straightforward, just transferring a small amount of property from one lot to the other. Everything was straightforward. The conditional resolutions require some mapping items that Joe has pointed out. And then lays out the approval of the process to submitting deeds and a chain, a title chain from July 19th, 1957, and, and then plats afterwards. We've discussed this quite some time, we had a public hearing last month. Do you have any questions about this resolution?
Straight forward.
Alright, so this would be Resolution Number 31 of 2024 regarding the, it's approving lot line adjustment for Three Borough Hall Lane LLC and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC. I make a motion to accept this, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second resolution tonight is for the Tesoro's Wetland application at One Seagull Road. This will be Number 32 of 2024. The application is for removal of the existing sanitary system, replacing with IA sanitary system within the vegetable buffer. Construction of a five by 14 cantilever second floor balcony within the vegetable buffer. Remove, removal of existing 16.3 by 8.3 shed that is located within the 25 adjacent regulated area. Construction of an 18 foot by 38.5 foot swimming pool within the adjacent regulated area, including two swimming pool drywells. Installation of a 1,000 gallon water tank for topping off the pool located in the 75 foot vegetable buffer. Installation of two drywells to handle stormwater runoff from the roof within the adjacent regulated area. And install pool equipment and relocate AC units within that, for the house within the adjacent regulated area. We had a public hearing on this last month. And going through the findings list, the planning board finds that the proposed application meets the criteria set forth in 129.5 of the town code. Specifically, the board finds that the proposed project will not negatively impact the value, function, or size of the wetlands. Applicants are proposing to remove an outdated septic pool and replace it with an updated system slightly further away from the wetlands. The updated sanitary system will have a positive impact on the wetlands as it will significantly reduce nitrogen from entering the wetlands. The swimming pool with its proposed mitigation regarding, regarding the cistern and pool cover will limit any negative impacts to the wetlands. Or determine that existing vegetation would provide the necessary buffer to protect the wetlands. The project, the proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quality, quantity or quality of groundwater. Applicants are replacing the outdated septic system with a new system. This new system will have a greater separation from the bottom of leaching pools, which will have a positive impact up to groundwater. The applicants have demonstrated that the proposed, proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff because applicants are replacing an outdoor, outdated sanitary system. The swimming pool is located within the ARA, but as far from the wetlands on the lot as possible due to the unique shape of the lot. Moreover, as part of the applicant's DEC permit, they are required to install and maintain erosion controls to minimize any disturbance to wetlands. Proposed project is the best alternative because of the existing location of the residence. Due to the configuration of the lot, the location of the existing residence, and the location of the wetlands, the applicants have proposed the new sanitary system in the best location on the property. With regard to the cantilever balcony, the board cannot grant a wetlands permit for structures within the vegetable day buffer, except as noted above. But the applicant should explore whether the balcony would be permitted as part of the 100 foot exemption. If you remember, there was some indication that a, a large renovation happened in 2015. But if they can prove that they didn't use their 100 square foot exemption in its entirety, then they could possibly get away with the, the balcony under that condition. So the conditions for the approval are the site plan by Matt Sherman, last revised June 24th. And prior to the construction, applicants shall install and maintain as depicted on the approved site plan, wire back silt fencing to prevent runoff and siltation. Applicants shall provide install stormwater collection. Applicants shall install a new low flow five gallon per minute well pump. And in accordance with the approved site plan application, applicants shall install cistern for topping off the proposed swimming pool and automatic cover to limit water needed. This permit should only be valid for construction for two years from the date of approval. Any questions, additional ideas? Sound good to you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 23 of 2024.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Is it 32?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the previous one, 31.
Okay.
31, 32. And the next one would be Resolution 33 of 2024, sketch plan approval for subdivision of Westneck Creek Cottages. Again, this is pretty straightforward, we had the public hearing last month.
We didn't have a-
Oh, we haven't had a public hearing, we did SECRE, updated the SECRE.
Public hearing, but then-
Right.
That's right. So this is for approving the sketch plan, and then they can move forward with their-
Correct, with the final subdivision.
Right.
So we've talked about this application a few times, hence my confusion. The applicant first came in one, one plan, we weren't so happy with it. They revised it to something that we were, felt more comfortable with, in which the required parkland was accessible by both properties instead of just one. And, and we updated the SECRE review last month. So they have to comply with some additional code mapping. They're not allowed to subdivide again. Have to, gonna have to record some covenants and restrictions, we deem them necessary. They have to provide a proof of single and separate ownership from June 19th, 1957. They have to go to the health department and the DEC if needed. They have to reach out to the Shelter Round Fire Department to see if there's sufficient fire protection in the area. Anyone have any questions about this resolution?
I think it looked out good for the parkland and-
Yes. I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 33, sketch plan approval of the subdivision of Westneck Creek Cottages. Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
This last one, it's bounced back and forth. We've been trying to work on this since June, July regarding the Nelson White Estate and the increase, increasing the remaining bond for the roadway construction and the fire cistern installation. And Beth helped us out by speaking to Stephen Kiley. And the town board wanted us to pass this resolution for the increase in the value of the, of the bond. And this is for the remaining section of the road, they just completed one this spring. Went from Manantic to the new parking lot, visitor parking lot. But this, the remaining bond is from the parking lot to the properties, remaining properties, and for the installation of two fire cisterns. And the idea is that they have to, instead of actually putting in the cisterns, they would have to, they put up this bond, and if they go to do any work, pull any building permits for any work on the remaining properties, they have to do this work prior. Or if they don't do the work, the town has to claim the bond and do the work on their own. So we talked about raising it from its current value of $380,000, which was the number Joe put together in 2021. And the current value for today's market would be $450,000. So I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 34 of 2024 to amend the conditional final approval for the subdivision of Nelson C. White Estate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
That ends our business meeting, open our work session. Current applications, lot line modification and subdivision applications. The Bloom Minor Subdivision, I ran into the applicant a couple days ago. They're still waiting on the health department certification of the IA system that went in, AKA the green stamp.
They're waiting on the green stamp because they need the well done. So the septic system, so I have a letter from the county saying it was installed as per the plan.
Okay.
They don't have the green stamp because they don't have the sign off on either a well or some of the county water hooking them up. So they're waiting on one of those two items before the county will give them the green stamp because that was part of the permit.
Thank you, Megan, that's, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
Barbara also mentioned that they haven't hooked up to the county water. They're trying to get a letter from them. Something about a pilot program, because they haven't expanded the Westneck Water District yet, or have official word to do so. I guess they've made improvements where theoretically they can update the system or expand, adding on additional houses, but they haven't agreed to that yet. So I don't know what the potential delay will be on this.
Yeah, they're just bringing the new well online. So once they have that well up and running for a little while, they'll see its capacity and its consistency, and then they'll be able to tie new people into it. So it's just a process. It takes them a little while to get a well up and running.
Two months, one month?
I want to see it all, and then I can tell you.
Okay. This one's just been dragging on for a while. They currently have until January 14th, so hopefully we'll get some, an update by then. SH-29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustments, we were just waiting for proof of final plat filing. They have till the 23rd of this month, or they have to ask for another extension. Sixth Daniel Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We received the official number of original plats from the applicant today. So they've been filed, and that's done, and we can take it off our list. Elliott Bowsmann Lot Line Adjustment, we're waiting on final maps, they have until November 12th. Don't have a status update on that one. RMB of Shelter Round LLC Radigan Lot Line Adjustment. They're waiting on, we're, we're waiting on the deeds, we haven't received them, which we will have to review before they can resubmit, and they have till December 10th. Westneck Creek Cottages LLC, LLC subdivision, we just agreed, voted on their sketch plan resolution. So now they have until April 8th of 2025 to submit the final application. DeFouer and Shear Lot Line Adjustment. Joe, we received an updated-
We just got some memo.
Memo from you. Do you want to walk us through that memo?
It's, it's simple. The previous iteration of the map had some mathematical errors. This cleared, the, the new map cleared those up. Essentially, they're just transferring a 930 square foot sliver from one parcel to the other. And now all the numbers are correct, and I think it's ready to have a hearing.
The only thing I saw today, and I took a little deeper dive into this, is that the adjoining property or the, one of the applicants, which I believe is Shear, they put in a new sanitary system with a series of leaching gallons. And they were pretty tight against the, the line in the corner. Do you see what I'm saying? See these, Joe?
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if shifting the line shifts the offset distances. I guess we can hold a public hearing and then ask the applicant about these when the time comes.
And I think they just have to maintain five feet.
Yeah. Maybe there's enough room, I, I just don't. Alright, just keep it in mind. Alright, so I'm, I'm content to accept the public hearing on this. Beth, can we trouble you for a public nurse? So we just dealt with the white performance maintenance bonds.
He skipped three and five boroughs.
Three, we're not doing, but three is done. We just received the final-
Three and five Borough Hall Lane Lot Line Adjustment.
Oh, you're probably right, yeah, I just did.
Number seven.
Number seven.
We're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting on the date, and we have till April-
John had submitted to me today, so I'll-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he used to.
And he has till April 8th to files.
Get them, and I'll let him know.
He's, he's on, watching.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then the last one is the Springer Minor Subdivision. This was a subdivision we'd been working on for quite some time. And I think the, the last extension was in August of 2020. And at that point, we, they just, I guess they had until December 13th of 2020, and ended up dropping the application, they wanted to come back. They had gone to the ZBA and they had gotten a variance. The variance is only valid for two years, so they have to go back to the ZBA. The question is, do we need to have a brand new application? Or can we, they had, we had reviewed sketch plan back. Let's see, Resolution 13 of 2017 adopted sketch plan for the minor subdivision. Do we need to require a full new application? Or can we just pick up from where it was before? I guess it all depends on how much has changed, if it's identical to where it was before, does that mean anything? If I remember correctly, Karen, are you, did you, there was part of a new sanitary system put in, and then a well or something, and-
Yeah, we have to do that, and we also have some trouble with electricity. It was to talk to the neighbor, so we have to move that, so that's why we stopped with that. But now, but we like to try to reopen everything and try to do the new setting and-
Has the work on the electrical service and the well been done?
Actually, I missed the meeting right now, well, like, like two weeks ago, and I was waiting for today to keep going with everything.
Your thoughts?
It's better to get all that stuff done, for, you know, for either you sort of application or follow with the old one.
I think the application will also help correct what needs to be done, make sure clear.
And also will help like for us to start waiting for like the health department and all of that because it's a long time to wait to-
Yeah, I, we're, so you didn't really get anywhere with the health department. You're gonna have to start over again with the health department, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you have a health department permit?
To come up, rather than-
Yeah, do, do you mind coming up to the-
I'm not, well, right now, Matt Sherman is the one helping me with all of this because in the past I wasn't like a-
Just, just for the, because that's where you're on the recording and people can see you, and smile for the camera subs.
So when we started all of this, I wasn't following the whole process. So two weeks ago, I started talking with Matt Sherman, and he's the one like trying to guide me with all of this. And I also been talking with Christina, and so I, my first step was getting the meeting today and see if we can, if I can keep going with this permit or start over.
Where were you with the health department? Did you have a permit?
I have to double check in that, I'm not sure. I know we, the issue was because of the electricity and the, the septic. We couldn't afford it at that time, so that's why we, we didn't keep going.
I know you got, I don't think, Marcus, you were on the board at the time, right?
I was here.
I would, yeah. I don't think the-
Not when it started, but when it was going on, I remember that like there was a well put in the wrong spot or something.
I think the well was put, a new well was put in in the wrong spot, right? Would the plant, would the, the map change at all, or would the subdivision be exactly as it was before? The configuration, would you be reconfiguring the map?
Yes, yes, yeah, I would have to do like a new survey and all of that.
Okay.
Well, if that's the case, then the survey, and the old plant-
Yeah, then everything is, then that's a, that's a new application. I mean, if you were coming back with the identical plan, the lines would change at all from what you had before? Then we could-
No, it's like, everything is exactly the same. In that time, we were doing the variance and doing the, so basically, everything is the same. The only thing we have to-
So you wouldn't have to redo the survey?
Well, I might be too old to-
Yeah, maybe it'd update.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think they would have to proceed, if they have sketch plan approval on some minor subdivision, the next thing would be a final application, right? And final application can be based on an updated survey. And plus, whatever, I mean, health department-
We could require a new application, and if everything clearly is as it was before, we can waive the first steps. But we prob, or do we have to go through SECRE again because it's alt? The health department require a new SECRE, require new everything?
I think if, if we did a SECRE determination based on a subdivision and the lots have not changed, I don't know that we would have to do another SECRE determination.
It's hard, it's hard to tell without, without seeing something. I'm not familiar with the project at all.
No, I know that, I know that. So I'm just, I'm just trying to help you out, I understand.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So if we did a whole new application, then there'd be new fees associated with it. I think we need the full new package because A, none of us have it. But we can talk further about fees, when we understand what they're gonna be.
I think there could be changes, and you're not even sure. And something could change based on the change of the well and electricity. They're gonna make, they're gonna have to do a new survey.
I think we'd have to see what they're proposing now, and then we can look back, I mean, at least the map.
Yeah.
See what, look back and see if it conforms to what was approved per the sketch plan. And if it varies from the sketch plan, then that might be, you know, something we'd have to look at again. But if not, then it might be somewhere, Joe said they just submit their final application.
But I think we also need, at this point, a new application, as in the forms have changed.
Yeah.
So the new paperwork, so if Matt could assemble that, none of us have copies of this anymore. So I think we actually will need a new application on that front. We'll do what we can to pick up pieces from the old application. Again, if there have been no model- Again, if there have been no modifications. So. Is that, I don't know if that, I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, me too. Well, I'm gonna start like trying to research more. So we'll go to you.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming in. Okay, Beth MC, we'll move on to other business. The wetlands code update. I haven't heard anything new, but I know the town now has hired an environmentalist, Teresa Mason, who works for Southampton and we have her on a municipal agreement.
Yep. She's gonna review the draft and give us any recommendations. That's kind of.
Is that going back to the committee or is it just staying with the town board at this point?
You know, I honestly don't know. It's gonna go to her. She'll make her comments. They'll probably end up back at the committee and on the board. That's my guess.
So this person had access to our final recommendations back to you? She's got everything.
She sure she, yeah, I'll make sure she has everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if our, if our memo made it to the town website or not.
I'll double check. But I have a copy. I'll post it.
Thank you. So the next one is site plan review. We talked about it last month. I put together a draft and sent it to you guys and then I know there was some question about the last paragraph and and wanting something more from the town board to understand what this is about. I guess there's some feeling that if we're not competent to do wetland review, why all of a sudden, and we weren't competent in 2019 to do site plan review, why are we being deemed as competent all of a sudden now to do site plan review? And we've not been given any real documented rationale by the town board for any of these decisions. And short of that, we don't feel comfortable taking it on to, it's the next whim. Come November, December, January, when there's a new board, is it gonna be just taken away from us again as we work to reestablish the process and and so right now, I think, and I don't, don't think I'm speaking just for myself.
No.
I think we're speaking for everyone here. This, we're just not comfortable taking it back. And.
Did you turn in our memo?
I haven't. I was, we were gonna talk it today. So do you want me to submit that then?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with the latest too. Marcus, you're okay? Okay, so I'll send this in tomorrow. We have four wetlands applications, two which are slated for a town, a public town board, public hearing on October 28th. That's Lopez and Loftus Hill and Tam. And then two which are slated for public hearing in November 28th. So clearly can talk about those other two next month. Okay. For the Lopez application.
Can you finish that up?
Sir? I haven't submitted. We were, we were gonna talk about it today.
Okay.
We skipped again on.
Yeah, I skipped.
Lot line adjustment, health department approval.
Thank you.
I don't think you're doing it on purpose, but we just mentioned that or.
Some cautious, cautious working here. The, the last item in the lot line adjustment, health department approval that came up with our policy being to require health department approval. Health department has a separate subdivision process that's independent of ours. And clearly that's needed in subdivisions that we work kind of in parallel. But in lot line adjustments, that only run, the applicant often doesn't know about the separate, separate process or runs into trouble. Or they get the town board, towns agree to the lot line adjustment, but then they go to do some work on any of the property and the health department says, whoa, this is not correct. So we've started as a policy requiring the health department, proof of the health department permit. And then Joe brought up the possibility last month of should the filed, final maps that are filed as miscellaneous maps at the clerk's office, should they likewise have a health department signature stamped and sealed? And going back to the requirement of the health department review, subdivision review, that's not written into the code. So I guess my question to you guys is one, should that be written into the code? That it's a requirement of the lot line adjustment? And if, if it is or is not, should it, should the health department be stamping the, the plat that's filed with the county? What do, what do other towns do, if I may, with your experience?
Southampton and I believe East Hampton both require health department approval.
For a lot line? And is that in code or is it policy?
Southampton, it's in code. I'm not sure about East Hampton.
As you said, Southern County doesn't distinguish between subdivision or lot line. They, they want the same thing. And so if we say you don't need the help, and they go there and they can't get it, it's making them, you know, hard work for them.
Well, I think the, one of the issues too that, and John Wypern had come across was
Right.
was the stamp being on the fi, the map that was being filed.
They don't like it, I think, is what he's.
And he was saying that he was concerned that they, when they file it within, at miscellaneous maps, that there would be an issue. But have we had any issues with other applicants?
Actually, if I, I'm remembering correctly, John had offered, he went to the clerk's office to do some investigation for us. John, would you like to join this conversation?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yeah. I told you I'd do some investigation for you and in the process of reporting the map for the for the six Daniel Lord Road and the three Borough Hall matter. And to my surprise, the mapping people told us that they will accept maps that have health department information on them, including, you know, hypothetical septic systems that, that are usually required on the health department maps for, to obtain the health department approval. That, that will surprise me, but it, it, I told you, I'd tell you what they had to say. So that, that was very informative. Because one of the things bothering me was that if you were to take, you know, our, a typical stripped down lot line adjustment map to the health department and ask them to put their stamp on it, they might be reluctant to do that unless the hypothetical septic systems that they approved were also shown on the map. So now the, I think the question's answered that they, that the county would allow these, these hypothetical systems to be shown on the map and, and a health department stamp to be on there as well. So that's, that's not really the impediment. The, but I think you had previously expressed concern that if those hypothetical systems were showing up on these maps, that somehow you would be approving of the location of those systems by giving your approval. So that, that's one issue that's still out there. But that, that's the result of my investigation. I was a little surprised, but I, I share it with the board.
John, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. Yeah. And Joe, you, you did have the, that concern that John just brought up about the conceptual, conceptual
Right.
system being read as approved.
Exactly. And it's been my experience with the health department. Once you get a health department approval on an initial map, which would show the conceptual layout for the lots. And that's approved, that's in their file. Then you can go back to the health department with a map that does not show those conceptual structures and they'll sign that. Because they, you know, this is part of their review process. They want to make sure that each of the lots can can be developed in accordance with their requirements. But you only have to do that during their review process. Then what happens is you, you know, you, you would prepare another, you know, usually with subdivisions, that's when we come back and we would do MyLars and the paper prints. And when we do the MyLars, we would.
They don't have those theoretical things on it.
Right. And go back to the health department and sign it.
But is it a real task to go back to the health department a second time and get them?
No. It's one of those things where, unless somebody's taking a vacation. If you get them in by Tuesday of the week, they get signed on Friday. So even if somebody was sick or took, was on vacation, it would be signed the following Friday. So it's not a typical health department drawn out procedure.
What are you guys' thoughts?
Well, I feel like if we don't require it, then you're kind of setting the applicant up for failure.
Possible failure.
Well, I think we have to require it. The question in my mind is, is we do it through code or through just policy, as we've been doing it through policy right now.
Southampton has a code.
And that would mean we'd have to ask the town board to change the code. And I don't know how quickly you guys will come in.
It's the bottom of the list.
Complicated change to code. So that would essentially take two board meetings, one to set the hearing, one to have the hearing, then we'd be able to pass it. There's no objection. So it's up to you guys to make a recommendation to us and.
I mean, if it's in code, it's a little more formal. It's protected. I don't know.
Yeah. And then as far as the, the, the map that gets filed, I mean, I agree with Joe's point. How, how important is it if we have proof of, that they had the subdivision, that that additional stamp signature is on the plan? It makes sense. I could see it go either way.
Yes.
It could go either way. So you're advocating for.
Oh, I'm, I'm advocating that we should have them put it off, put it off.
Okay. Are you all in agreement?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to go through all the lot lines we've been through, like how, you know, are they gonna need to know the location of all the septics and those?
Not the septics, just the stamp.
Just the stamp, just the stamp.
I skimmed through the code to find where health department approval was required in minor and a major. I didn't spend a lot of time. Is it clearly stated in, in those, in that part of the code? I'll have to go back and look at that. Look at which cases probably maybe be updated.
I mean, it might not be. It might just be something that just an obligation that you just get other jurisdiction
Yeah.
reviews where necessary. And most, you know, most put in their decisions that it's notifying applicants that they have to get whatever other approvals are required.
Okay. Let me draft something for the town board and I'll send it around to everyone to take a peek at it before it goes out. The one, so not to jump skip again, there's one wetlands permit application open. Seven Chequid Avenue, it's under coordinated review and I don't think there's anything to talk about, but there is, I will leave the room.
We have one quick discussion.
Yes, okay. I'm the architect for the applicant, so I'll use myself.
So do you remember last, last, we, we we agreed to authorize the consulting firm, PW Crosser, to do the coordinated review.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, I've been advised by Beth.
So I can. So just to follow up, coordinated review process door, window is still open. That would close on October 11th. In the meantime, before that closes, and once that closes, the board would then, assuming nobody bites us for it or wants to, you know, take lead agency, the board could declare itself as lead agency at the November 12th meeting. The way the days laid out, it was, it went over the, this meeting, so we had to wait. So November, November 12th would be when the board could declare itself as lead agency. So in the meantime, the thought was that we could schedule the public hearing for the wetlands for the December meeting because now with the new legislation, it requires, I think, 30 days for the notice period. So if the board wanted to do a public
the whole month.
Yeah, it would give the time period. We could do the notice for the public hearing and then notice it for the December 12th meeting. Does that work?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's a different, also our, we had children's advice.
That's fine. So and just to continue just the process, you know, at this point, the board would still need to make its determination of significance, which is based off of the SECRE review. And that would be most likely in January, we're thinking. So just to give you kind of an idea of where we're at.
So we would be opening up, you know, a public hearing for seven Chequid again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's it, right?
Right. It allows public comment. If there's any information, public comment towards the board's making its determination for a significant, significance.
Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to have a public hearing for seven Chequid Avenue, December 12th.
Oh, second.
Second. You have three votes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do them. I'll send the notice with Christina. And that's it.
That's it. You can back.
Can someone tell Ian?
You can tell. I have the phone. I have the phone.
Okay, now on to the wetland permit reviews. These are applications in front of the town board that we're reviewing as advisory. First is Lopez at 64 Gardner's Bay Drive. Marcus and I went and looked at it. They, it's a fairly simple application. They want to basically build out on the second floor, adding 21 square feet within the vegetative buffer.
On the second floor?
On the second floor.
There's no new square foot.
No, no expansion of footprint in the vegetative buffer or the adjacent regulated area. 156 square feet on the second floor within the adjacent regulated area.
Right.
So 192, our town code says existing structures on lots with bulkheads, new construction with expansion upward within the footprint requires a permit for activity within the vegetative buffer, but it does not require it for the adjacent regulation, but adjacent reg. So it's application really about the 21 square feet. And to me, I think to Marcus, that's a really minimal amount. They're also relocating the mechanical condensers outside the vegetative buffer into the adjacent regulated area, but that's just further away from the water. They're replacing a sanitary system with IA septic tank. They, it looks like they had replaced the bulkhead a few years back. And as part of that, the entire bluff is densely planted with seagrass that looks very healthy. And holding, stabilizing the hill and doing what it's supposed to. They're gonna bring the house up to energy code standards. And so I think this is all, and they're going to, the one thing we're asking them to do is pipe, roof, drain, one or two dry wells.
Was that one mysterious place?
Yeah, there was one strange pipe that was one parallel to the staircase down to the beach. It seemed to come out of the hill about halfway up and it drained, it looks like it was a drain. It would be draining behind the. It would be draining behind the bulkhead, someone's got to ask the applicant what that's about. The only other thing that we're saying about this application is that the homeowner made a donation to the campaign for a better island for all in the amount of $2,000. And it involves an IA sanitary system, so these are issues that have been brought up prior to the town board members reviewing this application. But otherwise, we recommend approval of the application straightforward and soon. We did see that the town's environmentalist, Teresa Mason, has writ drafted a recommendation or a review, parallels our review quite closely. She, the only thing that Marcus noticed was that she's saying the property fronts Orient Harbor, where it really fronts Gardner's Bay. Orient Harbor is a small, more, so they might have, the water regions might have different needs or concerns, but that's the one. And, but otherwise, they, so, like to know going forth, I mean, are we still going to be, if she's going to be writing these reports, are we really needed to do this? We don't mind doing them, but if the two reports are so closely aligned, then it seems like a redundancy. So I think that report's good to go. The next one, Julian Marcus, you looked at, this was Lofest Hill and Tam-
David.
David, I'm sorry, so.
No, it was me and Ham.
Do you want to briefly talk about this?
Sure, actually, I wish I had my notes with me.
I didn't print them. Sent them.
Yeah.
I didn't.
I have it here in my email.
It came from you?
No, no, it was just sent, just the notes. Well, anyway, in essence, they have a wetlands permit priorly, prior we, prior pass it.
To build the house.
To build the house and the plunge pool and, yeah, demolish, demolish the existing house and pool and build a new one. Everything was in the adjacent regulated area and beyond. And they had taken the bulkhead and that part of the project out of, out of the package, and then were going to refile when they got the DEC permits and everything in line.
Because that would take a long time, because they wonder decent, like a lot over.
A major portion of this is really for the dock people to review, the WMAC.
Yeah, it's going to wetlands because of all the recreating, there are two.
But we have no expertise in the bulkhead and the revestments. So they're reviewing that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I know, I spent some time looking at it, and, and I also read Teresa Mason's report. And she's claiming that it's a type one action. And I, I don't know, I mean, I have a list of type one actions here. These are items that are-
This is from the town code.
Town code, which is in addition-
These are, these are-
Additional.
Right, type two actions that they want to be treated as.
So type, type one actions are motel, hotel or apartment complexes of four units or greater, new sand, gravel or beach mining operations, parking facilities or other facilities with the need for an associated parking area of 20 or more cars, projects will, which will introduce or make possible new homes or other facilities for human occupation or habitation in the flood hazard area of the town, any major subdivisional land, marinas, commercial petroleum storage facilities, restaurants with a seating capacity of 20, of more than 20, laundromats, and then any operations which may degrade or spoil any freshwater tidal wetlands, which is a very open line. The only other thing I could think is, and I should reach out to her and talk to her about this, is new sand, gravel or beach mining operations. And the-
She's thinking maybe.
Maybe the projects proposing to mine 850 cubic yards from the site and just move them on to elsewhere on the site. So I, I, I don't know, and if it goes to, as she suggested, if the town board's going to deem this as a type one, then it has to go through coordinated review, and you guys maybe need to postpone that public hearing on the 28th. If it's not, then it's a simple review, I think for us.
Ultimately, though, the town board will make-
Oh, yeah, I know for us, but I mean, I think the recommendation-
I can read the recommendation that Marcus wrote. Did we strongly support the construction of the, of the new bulkhead and its stabilization boulders without delay? Delaying could only encourage more erosion as fall winter storms come on. We reject the ramps as the increase in impervious surface in the vegetative buffer. We recommend that paths and walkways be no more than five feet in width.
Code permits a five-foot pathway to the dock. This has structural ra, ramps, structural stairs.
Too much.
That's, that's- That's all stuff that we never permitted before in the vegetative buffer.
But the real thing is that the bulkhead is destroyed. I mean, it's really, really bad.
Yeah, it's gone.
It is, it is, it is eroding the soil away. And in five years' time, it's going to be threatening the house, the new house they just built.
And then the other thing that Reed wrote in this denial letter had to do with, with this new beach, creating the beach, it moves the wetlands lines. And we have just approved the house renovation based on a set of wetlands lines that if they now move, they are changing the whole dynamic of the prior approval. So I think at a minimum, the, the wetlands, the lineation line cannot change. Because then, or they have to stop the project and go through the whole, the whole project again. So, we should write something up and send it to you. And what are you guys leaning to? Are you thinking of looking at as a type one or?
We haven't discussed it. But the issue with the type one list has been brought to the board's attention.
There are, this is from Conic Sound Eelgrass, a geographic study from the Department of State. And there's a fairly decent eelgrass bed right off the-
Yeah, we got the best eelgrass in Conics, it's amazing, it came right back.
So.
Concos Harbor is full of it.
That is something to think about.
I won't let my daughter swim in there. For the scallop stuff.
We have the other two applications, Han and Lumley, do you guys want to discuss that now or for next month?
David was writing up the memo on Lumley. It's very close to the water, it's like everything's-
It's like ours too.
You know? And it, there's a, the only thing that we questioned was a small overhang that was part of the renovation that was in the 75-foot.
A balcony again.
Yeah. So, I wish he was here, because he was-
Well, we have next month to talk about, because this isn't, isn't due for a public hearing until November 25th, and we meet before that.
Okay, so we'll, David and I will get the memo together and send it to you, and then we'll circulate it, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Did you do Han yet?
Han, I did. And she sent it to me.
Sent it to everyone.
Okay.
Just a draft, just a draft.
Do you want to go through it then quickly?
I'm not sure, no, sure, yeah, so David Austin and I went to 70 Tut Hill Drive. The applicant is represented by Sherman Engineering. And basically, if you can picture, it's, it's a very small lot, it's, it's actually right on the water. It's, yeah.
Heaven and chain.
It's, so the existing house is 1,288 square feet. And then if you can picture right off of that, there's a deck and patio of 191 square feet. There's a little stone barbecue, if you're facing the house with the wall to your back on the right here. It's got 110 square foot covered porch and some rear stairs coming down. And then there's a 17 square foot outdoor shower there. And 36 square front steps and a, and a walk. The proposal is to take the 1,200, basically the 1,200 square foot house and turn it into a 2,074 square foot house. However, they're keeping the footprint, they're going up. So they're, they're basically increasing the height, and they're going from having a two, they're going from basically having a 100, what did I say for about the 110 square foot covered porch to a deck and patio with 291 square feet. So the existing changes are basically just some increase in the shower, stone barbecue staying. They're, in the plans, they, so the concern that David and I had was that in the plans, they talk about a basement. So we looked at the property, we were there, obviously, we didn't see any, there seems to be no existing basement right now. So our concern is that the, based on the test hole, which we also couldn't find the test hole on the drawing, unless you guys know that, we just, I looked it over many times, I couldn't find where it was, but we can ask Matt that next week, but-
There's a well, but I don't know if that's-
That's the well, yeah. So we're so close to groundwater that my concern and David's also was that the excavation for this basement, if that's how I'm reading it, needs to be considered, definitely. And the other thing is the height, let me see here, there's a couple of things. Also, there's, there's no bulkhead, but there's this rather low stone wall. And given, you know, storm surge and sea level rise, the, the stone thing is really doing nothing more than just, you know, aesthetics. It's not really holding back water or anything like that. So there's not much flexibility in the site development. They are within legal bounds, because they're going from a 35-foot dwelling height to a 42-foot dwelling height. And we did note, we stood on the shore and kind of looked back to the house across the street. It, it can affect the neighboring lots' water view, which is across-
There is a basement on the plains.
That's in the new plains.
The new plains, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying that's in the new plains.
You need to see a building section, you don't need to see how deep, what it actually looks like. Well, they have dotted in.
See, that's, or it's, it's pretty close. I don't know if the neighbors' views are part of the wetlands permit review. Just observations, just-
So they have finished floor at elevation 3.3 foot 2 inches, and the water table at 1 foot 2 inches, so they have a 2-foot separation from the water table to the top of the finished floor, the bottom, yeah.
Fuck, these are almost in it.
And I, I can't read that number for the-
I can blow it up here, which one?
Well, just what kind of cellar height.
Yeah, the cellar height, I think it-
Hang on, I'll tell you in a second.
It was six something.
7 foot 9 and 1/2.
I'm just saying, it seemed tight to us, and all this digging, and, you know, we're very close to wetlands. And I didn't, I didn't see detailed information about how they were going to try to prevent, you know.
And the water table does fluctuate up and down over time.
So, and also, we were just curious where the test hole was done, because I think, you know, depending on which part of the property.
That's a great question to ask.
And what else? So the other thing is that we, they are, they talked about several mitigation measures.
So I'm going to give you this T.
Like example?
TH, test hole.
Test hole, okay.
Elevation 7.5, so this is roughly, the 8-foot contour goes here, so that's the right area. So it's right in the, underneath the IA, new proposed IA sanitary, says TH.
Which would make sense, because they need, they would need to know where that is when they put that. What else? I guess we're also concerned about when this front, this new front shower, what would the specifics on water capture? What, what kind of permeable construction material or gravel were they going to use? And then just because it's so close to the water and the proximity to the water table, we just wanted, hopefully Matt will go over more stormwater capsule, capture details on that, because it just seems really important, given the proximity. And then the most important thing was, in past applicant, applications, when we've done these lots, I mean, these lots that are really close to the water, we've always held them to that existing footprint. So they actually, so we were thinking that with the, on the proposed rear staircase, when you're facing the waterside, that the applicant should reduce the encroachment into the wetlands from 200 feet, go to 100, and possibly use the 100-foot exemption. But we would generally like to see full adherence to staying within the footprint, because everything else is staying.
Yeah.
They're going top, you know.
Okay.
And I think, and we also thought about just maybe some native plantings, because all that's there is that stone wall and turf grass, and if they're already going to replace the turf grass, perhaps some native plantings, which they don't mention.
Well, the existing, existing cesspool is 7, 7.3 feet from the bulkhead.
Yeah, they're, they're going to put in an IA.
Yeah, I know, they're, well, they have to, they have to open that pump bit and pack it with sand or something.
Did I miss anything else? I think that's it. Oh, and, and also just a slow gallon pump, because of the closeness to the water.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Do you want me to ask Matt about those few questions? We got a detail on the basement?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the basement.
Okay, so was it, it was, what was the, was the basement detail?
Yeah, it's also in, just my notes.
I'll just.
Yeah.
I'll send him a note tomorrow. Good. All right, so you'll have that one sooner than later, too. Okay, that leaves us for the two special permit or site plan review applications. We'll start with Pearlman. So I've been, I had met with Joe Fenara, the town engineer, to review some details and read Karen and watch the property, but, but these guys over there. And Joe was going to put together a report. I reached out to him again last week and spoke to him today, and he has not gotten to a report. The way we usually operate is our Joe writes a memo. And say, for instance, parking. We are not fully versed in it. We could start doing our own analysis, but again, we always rely on our professional to do that. In case of the library, you know, they're asking for substandard lots, and they back up against a common drive, but we don't know what, what's the standard for that common width, that alleyway between. So, again, we have to, at a certain level, rely on our engineer. There are things here we can review without his input, but we're going to need some, some input from Joe. So if we need to, we have the ability to set a special meeting to review, to meet later again this week, a month, to help the process along. I think you have a, a public hearing on this on the 28th?
22nd. And then a follow-up on the 28th. Is this the, well, Pearlman's the 28th, sorry. Pearlman's the 28th, the library's the 22nd, and then the 28th.
So I don't know how quickly we're going to see that from him.
Put fire on him.
Okay. He didn't know, when I spoke to him today, he wasn't aware of punch dates, meeting dates, didn't understand where the things were and the process was in each. So some coordination might be needed. So we're being asked to review the Pearlman Music Program's application in regards to interior circulation and parking, landscaping, screening, existing development, the comprehensive plan and prior stipulations. And then size. Other things we're being asked in the library is pavement and lighting. And I don't know how much we're to be involved in that. In this one, we could certainly opine on it, but the pavement, the road construction would be more something we'd lead to Joe or Joe for response to. The lighting, if we have these specific fixtures, I think the library's- The lighting, if we have these specific fixtures, I think the library's given specific fixtures, we can look them up and confirm that they're shielded, but that's something the building department would be doing also. So Julia was very helpful and as she is on the Comprehensive Plan Committee and familiar, very familiar with the 1994 plan and the 2008 upgrade, did summarize. And maybe sufficiently I could just read that?
You can just read.
Just read that?
Just read this, I think, just the summary. Just basically, this is just the summary of 95, 2008.
Yeah, so this, this may be how. In summary, repeating themes are preserving the quaint, isolated quality of life, rural char, rural character and protecting natural and visual qualities, especially along shoreline roads. Additionally, balancing protections of natural resources and landowner rights and identifying cultural centers and institutions that historically support and contribute to the quality of life and strengthen our sense of community. Shelter Island Library is identified in both the 1994 and 2008 versions. The Perlman Music Program is included in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, namely because it was operating as Beconic Lodge in 1994. And she noted that the Beconic Lodge, the site itself, is identified under Special Places of Business in parentheses in 2008. Both Shelter Island Public Library and the Perlman Music Program, both errors, meaning in 1994 and 2008, are highlighted as cultural centers of businesses or businesses with key positive impact to island quality of life. Finally, the current plan, 1994, 2000. Finally, the current plan.
1994.
2008 speaks to Shelter Island encouraging business of smaller scale, which draw lightly on natural resources and keep with the balance of short-term visitors and both summer and year-round residents. In conclusion, adhering to the guidance of the Comprehensive Plan, the existence of Perlman Music Program and Shelter Island Library are crucial to island life and identity. But their build-out must respect natural resources and the goal of maintaining a rural quaintness, both in town center and in case of Perlman Music Program, retain shoreline scenic road views. For the planning board, this means scrutinizing build, building layout, sanitation, runoff charge and traffic flow parking. In regards to the Perlman Music Program, we did receive a letter from a adjoining neighbor. I guess it was a letter sent to the zoning board of appeals in April, so you guys are probably familiar with your neighbor. And they said they had made some requests and that the requests were unheard. I don't know, did you, as a town board, receive that?
We did receive a letter.
Yeah, so. So going back to interior circulation and parking, I think we need to hear from Joe Fenora on that. There was some discussion of an emergency vehicle apparatus road, especially going back to all the cabins. There was some question as to sufficiency of parking, not wanting as much use of shore road or. Next one up, where there's currently parking off-road with signs everywhere that you guys put up. I think that was very helpful. They're so worried if cars are parked on both sides and there is an emergency, how does a fire truck go through? So really looking to minimize the use of roadside parking. And I know that a plant, but it only applies to a couple events a year. And you guys are providing a parking space for this, maybe it needs to be a little bit more. But I'm waiting to hear on Joe's memo. Landscaping and screening, we looked at that plan prior, I mean, I can look at it again. It seemed pretty detailed and I was comfortable with it. So this is for the shore road over here, Stern's Point here. And the key notes extensively what trees are being removed, what trees are being planted. It's understood that some have to be removed for the work and the relocation of buildings and the expansion of the performance pavilion. So I think some thought has been put into that and we can make a more detailed comment also. Same goes with the other side of the road. White oaks, black oats, sweet ferns, low, blueberry bush amongst many typical planting details. And this road just has, this road's going to have to be engineered more to be able to turn vehicles around. Fire trucks, you know, have to figure out how to spin to camp back out.
And they triple up weight.
Yeah. So we'll try to get some more specific recommendations and then we'll have to look at this plan again. We just talked about the existing development, the comprehensive plan. I don't think it's within scale. I was concerned when we just received the floor plans without any elevations, seeing what you guys did to try to have the view from the water from shore road match essentially what's there now. It's plausible. So I don't think we have a problem with that. And then as far as size, it seems within keeping of what's there. It's a Schreed campus, if you want to call it that, and I have no problems with it. So I can put our, we'll start working on some preliminary comments.
Yeah.
And let's see where Joe is and maybe we do set up a special meeting. I think, what do we have to notice? 10 days for a special meeting?
Yeah, but then it's as soon as poss, you know, there's flexibility as far as, you know, as soon as possible, you know, so.
Oh, so if we, five days out or something, we could even do?
We'd have to, I'd have to look, but, you know, you have to notify the newspapers, you have to do your certain notice.
I think it's just notifying the papers, it's not even necessarily publishing, it's just.
Yeah.
Get that information from Joe first. Yeah, yeah, so we'll, I'm not trying to throw him under the bus, I don't want him to be angry tonight.
Can I just say on the fire?
Apparates.
Oh, can you come up? I think she has some.
Sure.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm the executive director of Perlman Music Program. And I just wanted to say that there's plenty of room back on the South Parcel to add a turnaround for fire trucks. So if that's the recommendation, it's something that we can.
Beyond the end of the road, all the way to the top and then keep going, there's that, yeah, so.
There's just a lot of, yeah, lenders, it's easy to, to add.
And there, there are road minimums to this, too. I think it's, off the top of my head, it's something like 25 feet. And then, and then there's road-based construction, they handle a certain weight of truck. So there's some things that we'll need more details on.
Yeah, and we're equally waiting for feedback.
Understood.
To, yeah, how to amend the plan to address all.
Absolutely understood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We provided a, provided a spec of the surface to the, to PW Grosser to request this.
Okay, so Grosser has that?
Yeah, and they have.
Okay. And yeah, so that, that addresses comments I have. Anyone have any other thoughts on the Perlman Music Program?
Just the parking for me. This doesn't seem adequate. I think they're either estimating future.
You know, and, and runoff, too. Because if we get a heavy rain, it all comes down that hill and it all goes out.
Across the beach.
Right across into the, into the beach.
They, they have a, I believe they have a system, dry well selection.
What's in place now?
Can I speak to the runoff?
Yeah, sure. If you'd like to introduce yourself.
I'm James Cummings, I'm the facility manager for Perlman. If we look at Stern's Point Road, coming from the east, coming from west neck, there is a long grade as we approach Prospect, coming up from Shore Road. There is tremendous water coming down that road. That influences on Stern's Point, coming to the corner of Prospect, where the Lang's House is, between the Ridwin and the Perlman. So that's one area. But if we go back east a little bit to the other side of Perlman property and towards the, the private road that cuts through, there is tremendous water which could be captured from the highway with storm drains that don't exist on that road at all. And so, and then as those approach our property, they spill over into, to naturally downhill towards us. So in conjunction with the plans that are being put forward, we would reach out for support from, from the town to.
That would be according with Ken Lewis of the Highway Department.
I just wanted to, no, thank you.
But I do see stormwater collection on here.
Yeah, but basically.
Yeah. Those wells. Oh yeah, there was some question about the water line going underneath Stern Point Road. And I think Joe and Reed will be addressing that, too. Because it looks like there's multiple wells, but they all seem to feed a common supply. See, well, 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 well.
Yeah.
Well, 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 they all feed this common supply. So they'll definitely be asking you more about the water supply system, which clearly is something the Health Department would be reviewing.
For the parking, too, I just want to reiterate that we're not adding usage at all. I mean, the capacity and the size of the community that uses the campus, whether internally the students, the faculty or visitors to the performances, stays the same as it is now. So we are, you know, any added parking spot is an added one, so we are adding quite a bit. And yes, of course, for the engineer, I'm determined if it's sufficient, but it works now with minimal parking along the road. Most cars park within the campus lines.
And you're providing a.
The tea areas by the campus. So, yeah, just for your consideration.
Anyone else have questions about the Perlman Music Program? All right, thank you. Can we move on to the library?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Do you mind on the next slide, you have a letter?
Yeah, how, how are you?
Good, I'm fine. Just wondering when that complaint is going to be addressed.
So we're, as a planning board, we're an advisory board to the town board. So on this application, so that will be a part of the consideration of the town board's file.
On the 28th?
On the 28th of that public hearing.
Thank you.
So I likewise met with Joe and Reed on the library. And the points that we're going to be reviewing are interior circulation and parking, landscaping, existing development, comprehensive plan and prior stipulations, pavement, lighting and the size. And the code requires 200 square foot, for each 200 square feet of building, a 10 by 20 foot spot. And we're.
What was that again?
I, I sent you the excerpts, too. But for every 200 square foot of building, and I'm pretty sure, sure that means habitable space and not storage and. But again, I'm looking for Joe Fenora's clarification on this, that we need a 10 foot by 20 foot spot. We did receive a letter that they have some stalls that are 9 by 18 instead of 10 by 20. And that seems a little tight. If you have a Yukon XL or a Suburban or a nice pickup truck, big pickup truck, if you have a small car, a smart car or something, it's not a problem. But it's all relative and something to be taken into your consideration.
And we do get mixed vehicles in some shelter rounds and it's not just.
We do, we do get a mix and I mean, maybe some areas have small car parking areas and big cars in others. In case of the library, they have an 18 inch deep bay here, 18 inch deep parking on the other side and 24 feet in between. I don't know what the code is for the space in between, you know. If we, if you're making them 20 and 20, then all of a sudden you only have 20 foot of roadway and that seems too tight to be running cars now. So again, I have to look to engineering work. A lot of the spots or quite a few of the spots that are being proposed are grass strip, especially against the back of the building. All those are, for the greater part, grass parking spaces. And I don't know how that works in the off-season or for plowing or for an older person with a cane. I think that all, all this would want to be asphalt. But they may, since they've maxed out the lot so much, they may be pushing their permissible impervious numbers, coverage numbers. So that has to be clarified. Another thing that came up is there's a crosswalk in the corner facing the rotary. And it just seems like an odd place to have a, a ramp out of the curb cut. I'm like that. So again, I want more, this is the ramp right here and it drops you out right in the intersection. We have, we have an official crosswalk here, but dumping people out there instead of crossing over here. So it may suggest that we make a, suggest this find a, a new location. So you're going over to the Legion instead of heading right into the center of the circle. Yeah. There was some concern that came up at the, at the pre-conference meeting where originally the application, so the Health Department bases occupancy or occupancy on the amount of square footage of the lot, the amount of water, it can dissipate a day and it's something. So 360 gallons per day, I believe, or hour, I don't know what the technical basis is. Commercial systems are. Commercial systems are a lot different than residential. And, and then likewise, habitable space, every square foot of habitable space requires a certain amount of, adds to the same formula. Previously, I was told that they had almost two and a quarter, two and a half times the viable density that the lot was. And then at our meeting, they were under the threshold, but there was no reduction in the building size. There was no reduction or increase in storage and a reduction in habitable space. So I know that there's a lot of questions about how they got the new number. And some thought that until we really understand what the Health Department is going to agree to, the building size may change, which will then change the amount of parking spaces needed. So there's really a question as to how far along, how far along we want to go before we get some real feedback from the Health Department. That was brought up. Obviously, as far as the comprehensive plan, it's a.
Just going over that altogether.
But the comprehensive plan talks about something within the scale of, the small scale of a rural neighborhood. And I question whether, whether this building, which is quite large, meets that scale. It's definitely the biggest building in the center of town when it gets completed and short of some of the big hotels, it might likewise be large. So I don't, I don't know. As far as the rural character, they're proposing cyclone or otherwise known as chain link fence around the perimeter. I mean, I'm, I advise that that's, that's not really a rural look. The garbage container is being wrapped in eight foot high chain link fence. Again, it's not a rural look. And it is in the center of the town, so things, something that town may want to think, well. They are pulling the parking spaces away from the road. Right now, the parking lot goes right up to the sidewalk, to the curb. That is being pulled back, that's nice. If, if there was a way to reduce, to add a little more green lawn and pull the parking back even further, maybe that's something, but not necessary. We're talking about this for, again, for size, this is in the B1 zone. 50% of the lot could be covered by building and 75% by imperious, impervious surface. I went through the drawings and I couldn't find any calculations for where they are impervious and where they are building coverage. So that's going to be something that we need. As I mentioned, they did provide some fixtures, so we're gonna have to look them up and see if they're shielded for dark sky compliance. And they do have pavement details that Joe was gonna look at, the Building Department. And the question is, is there enough screening for the adjoining properties? There's a residential property behind it. There's no noted line of hedge or screening that would, you know, headlights blasting right at the house. It'd be nice to have a dense hedge along that back property line. Again, I keep, even though we don't have an architectural view board, and I'm not saying that the building is unattractive, it is fitting within the institutional buildings in the town, I'm thinking of further up the road, with the brick veneer and all. I'm just, you know, thinking about some of these other amenities that.
The chain link fence.
Chain link fence just keeps coming back to me. And.
I think that's just for construction. I don't think the chain link stays forever, no.
Around the garbage can?
Oh, I don't know, I have to look at it.
That's why.
I was thinking you were saying around the whole property, and I said that would be a safety thing during construction, but it's not something you can leave up after the fact.
I don't know, it says, proposed chain link fence, black approximately 300 feet along the northern property boundary, see sheet, you know. It's not a, it's not a construction limitation, it seems like an actual. So we again can start putting some little things together. I just waiting for more guidance from.
You guys can start working on it, I'll get Joe to follow up.
Especially about the distance and the parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, you know, some, again, some moderation is maybe accepted by the town, but I don't know. I don't want to advise anyone one way or the other on. Yeah, we have someone on Zoom, Christopher Sepp, who'd like to speak. Please join us. Hello, Christopher Sepp.
Hi. Good evening, Chris, my name is Chris Sepp. I am with the architectural firm representing the library. And I hear some of your questions have come through and I did want to help clarify, you know, what some of the items are and at least, you know, how we're approaching it and the reasons why. The first item that was, I guess you brought up was with regard to some of the parking on site and its regard is to land banking that parking. The idea being that, you know, in lieu of placing asphalt everywhere and in light of how the library is used and what they currently operate with as far as parking stalls go, we didn't want to wind up paving the whole site, you know, the, the idea that this is, you know, it is a sort of institutional application, but it still sits within a residential area. We wanted to keep as much of that grass area on the west side of the site as possible. And in those instances, when the library does need to have parking, they would utilize, as they do now, the grass area on the west side of their site. We do have some, you know, area in that location that's called out to be paved for an accessible stall to access the lower level. But if, if needed, there would be, or there are shown two accessible stalls on the north side of the site that would access the upper level and they could take an elevator down to access any of the functions there. And the crosswalk location, I do need to discuss that with the engineer. I know some of that's existing, some of that is not defined by a curb in that area. So it's probably something that we can, you know, discuss further and help develop with you. The chain link fence, I know they're, they've looked at that as a barrier along the north side against the plot that's sort of, there's, there's nothing there right now on the north side of the plot. And on the west side of their plot, there isn't anything that necessarily screens the existing library from the adjacent residents. And then the lighting that we're, you know, proposing there is all dark sky lighting with cutoff. And there should be a plan provided on that set there that shows all the lighting levels. There's a photometric plan provided with the planning submission. So we've, you know, kept all the lighting at safe levels for the site, but none of that lighting is going to spill onto the adjacent sites as shown there. And then I guess the other question that's come up with regard to how much, or the, how the number was arrived to for the library and the sanitary calculations. In the first go around with the Suffolk County Health Department as we had filed this, some of the numbers and spaces that they were looking at were, assuming this is large meeting spaces and not necessarily a library itself in assembly, which is a very, much more reduced number here. And, you know, keeping with the library as it is, also not looking to increase, you know, the, the benefit of libraries that it's going to provide better services, but not increase, you know, how many people are using the library on a daily basis. You would still see the same amount of people, we're not increasing people coming to the island to use the library, you know. It's not intended to be that where we're going to be attracting somebody from the North or South Fork to come over to the library to use it. It's more for your existing patron base for the whole island.
I think that's, I think that's understood, it's just the way it's, again, I'm an architect, I'm familiar with the residential standards, I'm not familiar with the commercial standards. And it's been explained to me that the, the way the Health Department looks at it, the county Health Department is very strictly, and I don't think they necessarily differentiate between the different types of spaces, but I could be wrong. Again, I don't want to misguide anyone. It was just something that someone brought to my attention and they were a little concerned about the huge amount of number change in the, in the reporting, so.
So at least that process has moved significantly further from where it was initially filed. And the idea, you know, not the idea, but our understanding is we just have to fill a few, check off a few boxes for them. It shouldn't necessarily affect the size of the building. We're anticipating that it's not, it's more of these, you know, this ongoing dialogue with Suffolk County Health Department has been happening. And so we're, we're pretty confident that where it's at is where it'll stay, are not anticipating any, you know, changes to have to decrease the size of the building at this point. But we'll, we'll follow up as soon as we have that information and approvals in hand, we will share that with you.
And as I said, we're, we're gonna continue, you know, putting our advisory report together for the town board. I'm just, again, expressing concern that was brought up.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you very much.
No, thank you, thanks for the explanations. Anyone else have any comments about the library or thoughts? Okay, if that's the case, does anyone have any comments or thoughts for the planning board? I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. On favor? Thank you, everyone.